Well, welcome everyone. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Orange County School Board. Today is October 23rd, 2019. And I'm going to ask if you would join us in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ms. Member Lopez, if you would lead us in that. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. And tonight, I am happy to tell you that Orange County Public Schools is once again a Florida healthy school district as a Gold Level recipient. So what does that mean? I don't know about you guys, but that's what I was wondering, being that this is my first year on the board. It means that our board has made a commitment to meet the health needs of our students, such as having a referral process for vision, hearing, medical, dental, and mental health. A child who's having difficulty seeing the front of the classroom may need glasses. And needing glasses and not having them is a barrier to the learning for that child. I certainly know that to be the case. But what I didn't know was that this district also has implemented a referral process to help every child that needs to get glasses. And in return, that obviously makes their learning potential so much greater. The award is issued through a partnership between Florida Action for Healthy Kids, Florida Association of School District Superintendents, and Florida Healthy Kids Corporation. Melody Griffin, the State Coordinator for Action for Healthy Kids, is here along with our own Director of Health Services and Specialized Instruction, Linda Langa. So if I could call Ms. Griffin to the podium along with Ms. Langa. Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for that introduction. You did most of my speech here, but that makes it easier for me and short and sweet and to the point. And as a longtime partner with Winter Park Health Foundation and also the State Coordinator with Action for Healthy Kids, I am so incredibly proud and honored to present Orange County Public Schools with the Gold Level Award for a Florida healthy school district. Scoring at a Gold Level indicates that your district is working towards addressing the needs of your students, staff, and families. I especially want to applaud you for what I believe to be the most important area, which is district infrastructure. Your district scored 100 percent. You can't get any better than that. And that's what means that you guys continue to earn this award because you have the infrastructure and sustainability in place to continue to be a healthy district. And I've done a lot of these presentations over the years, and I can honestly say I've never seen a team like this come together or this many people come to share in part of this award. So for those of you that worked on the healthy district self-assessment, would you stand up and be recognized? So a huge congratulations to your district for putting the time, energy into this self-assessment and award. We applaud you for establishing a positive culture and climate and for working towards reducing and eliminating the barriers to learning. And really just thank you from those of us in the community that value health and well-being for our students, staff, and family. Orange County Public Schools is remaining at the forefront for ensuring a healthy future for Florida, and I look forward to working with you over the next couple of years to continue to make your district a success. Thank you. And with that, we have a shirt for Dr. Jenkins on behalf of FADS, and we have the flag that we would love to present you with.
Awesome. Wonderful. Look at this. All right, so let's do this. I stole your line and you stole mine. So I was going to recognize the teams that are involved, so let me just make sure we've covered everybody. We've got Environmental Services, Food and Nutrition Services, Employee Wellness, Exceptional Student Services, Health Services, Physical Education Counseling, Psychology, and Social Work, as well as family and community involvement. Did I get everybody?
A lot.
Okay, so you've got a really cool flag. We've got a great group of people that made this happen. Why don't we get all, everybody who's involved with this up here behind the flag and get a picture? And we have, yes, perfect. And then you can give Barbara her shirt.
I think it'd be better if we stay up here.
Yeah, I'm thinking we stay up here, we get them behind the flag here, or the banner, or whatever.
Come to the middle. Come to the middle.
Yeah. Everybody's good chance. Yeah, perfect. Yeah. That's so funny that she took my line.
It's funny.
Yeah. Yeah, well, they read the script and I'm like, I don't know what it means.
Is the flag backwards? It's like it's facing us.
Does the flag need to turn around?
Is the flag backwards? Kathleen, turn the flag.
I think it's facing how it is.
Oh.
It's both sides. It's fancy.
It's a real flag. It's not a banner.
Awesome. Awesome.
Great job, you guys.
Thank you so much. Good job. Oh, sorry.
I may eat your cupcake here.
Get away from my cupcake.
Congratulations. Great job. I love that.
All right, great job. And thank you for not just making us look good, you make us feel better and you make us very proud. So thank you so much. We are going to move on to our strategic plan update. Before we do that, Dr. Jenkins, we had discussed in the past turning the agenda around a little bit and announcing any recognitions or promotions so that our dedicated staff don't have to stay with us the whole evening. So why don't we take that next if we could?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I only have one introduction. That is Danielle Willis Albares Abilias Willis, Assistant Principal at Bay Meadows Elementary, now the principal at Waterford Elementary.
Thank you, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for the opportunity to serve the community at Waterford Elementary. Thank you.
So did you have any family members you wanted to acknowledge? Okay, give her the microphone back. We're not in that much of a hurry.
You don't get to do that.
Okay, yes, I have my family here, my husband and my two beautiful children. And then my parents that are on a cruise right now, they couldn't cancel their plans. And my sister, they're far away, but telling them I love them and thank you all for your support.
Husband and two beautiful children, stand up because you are part of the team. Folks, if it takes a village to raise a child, I don't know what it takes to be a principal, okay? But I know it takes a really strong family, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And so why don't we move on to our proclamations again, and then we'll come back to our strategic plan update, because we are sitting on the edge of our seats where Mr. Dr. Armbruster waiting to hear your report. But these will take just a minute. Proclamation, recognizing October 23rd through the 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Orange County Public Schools. And to present that proclamation on the behalf, the board is Mary Ann Anderson. Ms. Anderson, thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. All right. Whereas alcohol and drug use in the nation have reached epidemic levels, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for alcohol and drugs among our youth, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to alcohol and drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and be it resolved that Orange County Public Schools does hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2019, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities not only during Red Ribbon Week but all year long, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also are proclaiming October 23rd through the 31st, I'm sorry, November of 2019, the whole month, as Family Engagement and Education Month here in Orange County Public Schools. And Shawna Hughes Sims is here to present that award. How are you, Shawna? Present that proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, School Board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff. Whereas family involvement in a child's learning is critical to student success from preschool through college and sets the foundation for preparing Florida students to be lifelong learners and meaningful contributors to society, and whereas creating an environment where learning takes place not just in the classroom but as a central part of family life requires that families play an active role in their children's education, and whereas the role of families in creating a successful preschool-through-college education system for Florida's children is very important, whereas Orange County Public Schools' educational leaders have developed resources for families looking to engage more fully in their children's education and to strengthen the partnerships between families and schools, and whereas the Florida Department of Education and Orange County Public Schools' educational leaders are available to provide information, resources, and training to support families in using school and state accountability data, making informed school choice decisions, and establishing effective homeschool collaborations so that families can be actively engaged in the academic achievement and development of students, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the critical contributions made by families who foster a love of learning in their children and by educators who acknowledge the importance of family education engagement and encourage making family engagement an integral part of the mission of all schools. Now therefore be it resolved that Orange County Public Schools does hereby proclaim November as Florida Family Engagement and Education Month and encourage families and schools to create strong partnerships on behalf of the future of our students and their families across the state of Florida in recognition of Florida Family Engagement and Education Month.
Awesome. Thank you. And we are also recognizing and proclaiming November as the, I'm sorry, November 2nd through the 9th as Week of the Family here in Orange County Public Schools. And Elizabeth Ratter, is she here? Elizabeth, you, there we go. She's Chair of Week of the Family. Welcome. It's great to have you with us.
Good evening. I actually have the proclamation to read.
You do? Okay.
And then I will turn it over to Mrs. Ratter.
Thank you, Debbie.
Whereas the mission of Orange County Public Schools is to lead our students to success with the support and involvement of families and the community, and whereas the School Board of Orange County recognizes that parental and community support is essential for the educational benefit and well-being of our students and for public education in Orange County, and whereas a goal in our strategic plan includes sustained community engagement, and whereas during the week of November 2nd through November 9th, 2019, Orange County students and their parents are encouraged to recognize, renew, and celebrate their bonds and family life. Now therefore be it resolved that Orange County Public Schools does hereby proclaim November 2nd through November 9th, 2019, as the Week of the Family in Orange County Public Schools. Mrs. Ratter?
Thank you very much.
It's great to have you here with us.
Nice to be here. Nice to have you on this side, too.
Likewise. It was nice to have you over here.
Thank you. School Board members and Superintendent Jenkins, we've had a great start to our year, even though it's just a week. But this year's Orange County Week of the Family theme is Be Present, and that theme was suggested by our very own Mrs. Tara Karch, who's a 4th grade teacher from Thornbrook Elementary School and also past Teacher of the Year. The suggestion was unanimously approved by our committee. In the past, we've had Unplug and Connect, but this is even more than that, like being present in the moment and not thinking about what you just did or what you have yet to do, but actually enjoying one another while you have the moments together. The essay prompt this year was, "I should be present with my family because," and we set a record for the number of essays submitted. We had 1,035 submissions, yes, and from 97 schools in the county. And so you may or may not recall that we had 265 last year, so this is a huge improvement. And we think that's in large part because of our partnership with OCCPTA, they helped us get the word out, improved social media, and the Mayor's Trophy so that in that way we can compete with the private schools and the public schools and homeschooling, and also increased principal support in writing the essays. And what's another great thing is that the middle schoolers, we had 595 essay entries, and for high school, 203, which they're headed towards the family years, so it's so great to have that involvement when they think about why they themselves should be an active participant in the family. We still have time left in our Family Table Time Contest. You'll find that at each of your locations, you can win a staycation with your family by just eating together and talking about being present for one another. And all you have to do is snap a picture of you with your notes. It doesn't have to be on the placemat, but it can be on any paper, and just submit it, and you can win two nights at the Wyndham, tickets to Wonder Works, Wild Florida, Sea World, and Crayola. That's also with support from the foundation. And I hope I said Sea World, too, because Sea World just.
You did.
And the Mayor's Family Fun Day is where the Mayor's Trophy will be awarded to Bridgewater Middle School, who had 263 entries in our essay contest. So we hope everyone will take the time to be present for one another and your families and by listening, watching, interacting, playing, and just being in the moment with each other. We really appreciate Orange County Public Schools' support. You have people from the foundation on our committee and people from the Parent Academy, and our partnership with the Parent Academy is awesome. In fact, that's where they'll be announcing the winner of the Family Table Time Contest. So everyone will want to be present then, November 2nd at 9:00 a.m., to find out who wins. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Elizabeth, thanks. It's great to see how much you have grown this effort in the years that I've known you. Yeah, it's making a difference.
It's been fun and.
And it's especially exciting to hear high school and middle schoolers, because we, most of us have had high school and middle schoolers, and we know that transition period can be tough, and it's nice that they're still participating. Congratulations.
But I love, one of the high school students said, "Not all Fs are bad." He said, "When I think of family, I think of foundation, faith, fun, and not Facebook."
Wow. That's awesome.
So that was, I should give credit. Justin Kelleher from Olympia High School wrote that in his essay.
Nice job, Justin.
So he's one of the winners. So it'll be fun. They don't know their places yet, but.
Awesome. All right. Okay, so the agenda shows that the strategic plan update is coming from School Specialist, and School Specialist Annual Update coming from Brian Holmes. But I have put, oh, let's do, yeah, come on up and get a picture, and then I'll try to clarify what page we're on. Come on up. Oh, definitely. You have kids. Yes, we brought family, of course, we brought family. Awesome.
You need to make quote posters out of those, because that's so awesome.
Hey, guys, how are you? Hi. Hi, little one. Thank you.
Oh, he can reach. He's tall.
He's tall.
Thanks, Roberto.
Great job. It's wonderful.
Okay. All right, before, before, all right, I am off. So let me hear from Dr. Armbruster, who is not giving us a strategic plan update. He is.
Proclamation.
Thank you.
The last one. Thank you. Madam Chair, Board members, and Superintendent Jenkins, thank you for this opportunity to recognize our OCPS national, OCPS apprenticeship programs as we approach National Apprenticeship Week. As the oldest structured form of education still in existence, the apprenticeship model is growing in number and in possibilities. Here in OCPS, we actually have the largest apprenticeship program in the state of Florida with our Florida Electrical Apprenticeship Training Program, which recently hit 800 students for the first time in the program's more than 30 years of existence. We are also excited to be working towards offering programs in welding, pharmacy tech, and medical assisting, and have recently opened a carpentry program with our industry partners, IBuild of Central Florida. It is an exciting time for apprenticeships. That being said, I would like to introduce just a few guests. Karen Nichols, Training Director for the Central Florida Mechanical Program. Janet Skipper, Assistant Training Director for Central Florida Electrical Apprenticeship. Francis Bile, Lead Instructor from the Central Florida Electrical Apprenticeship. Steve Lindis from the Department of Education is a Central Florida Training Rep. Robert Tidwell, who is an Assistant Training Director for our Florida Electrical Apprenticeship Training Program, and Megan Oates, who is our Apprenticeship Coordinator for our Childcare Apprenticeship Program. Thank you all for being here this evening. The proclamation for National Apprenticeship Week reads as follows. Whereas November 11th through the 17th, 2019, has been designated National Apprenticeship Week, a nationwide celebration that gives businesses, communities, and educators the opportunity to showcase their apprenticeship programs and apprentices while providing valuable information to career seekers, and whereas National Apprenticeship Week, now in its fifth year, will bring together registered apprenticeship programs from across Central Florida via OCPS career and technical education to bring awareness to the local community, culminating in a 2019 Registered Apprenticeship Showcase on November 14th at the Orange Technical College Mid-Florida Campus Launch Site, and whereas the 2019 Registered Apprenticeship Showcase will give OCPS high school students and the general public the opportunity to speak with registered apprenticeship program representatives, listen to guest speakers, meet local employers and industry partners, and attain valuable information in regards to starting their career as a registered apprenticeship in fields like building construction trades, childcare education, advanced manufacturing, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and more. Now therefore be it resolved that Orange County Public Schools does hereby proclaim November 11th through the 17th, 2019, as National Apprenticeship Week, and we thank you all for that.
Thank you.
You might, if we come get a picture.
I definitely want to bring the team up. And when you're coming up, member Gold has a comment or two to make. You want to do that afterwards?
I can do it after.
Hey. Don't come up without. Great job. Great job. Thank you. Yeah, it's great to see you. Good to see you. Good job. Good to see you. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Kind of looks like somebody needs to be in the middle there, but, all right. They have the sign.
All right. Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you. Comments?
Yes, thank you. Member Gold.
So before, before we move on to the strategic plan, I can't say how tickled I am about the growth in our apprenticeship programs and our ability to transition not only young people but retraining people and people wanting to build skills right into workforce. And I had a chance to spend some time with Mid-Florida Tech campus last week when we finally received two buses from Disney to help with our CDL and our diesel mechanics program. And every one of the teachers that I talked to there was talking about how this will help with really giving real-world experience and getting people right into a job and comfortable in that job. And that's what these programs do. It's incredible how much farther advanced they are because they've had that real-life experience. So thank you to this team and so many others that are working with us, and all the industries that are working with us in opening up new doors every single day for apprenticeships and on-the-job training programs.
Thank you all. All right, and now we will move into our strategic plan update. Chief Holmes, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Jenkins. I am Brian Holmes. I'm the Chief of the District Police. I'm also appointed as a District School Safety Specialist. Tonight, we'll be having the School Safety Specialist Annual Update along with, I'm going to talk to you about the Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool. I'm going to give you a kind of an overview of the status of our, of our security program here. I'm not going to talk to it in great detail, but I'm going to tell you about the program, all these things that we do, why we do them, and more importantly, that we do them and we both meet and exceed the requirements of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act. And when I say that, tonight, we're meeting one of those requirements. We're here, I'm doing this presentation to the board, we're going to have an executive meeting, executive session after this meeting to talk in detail about some recommendations and the direction we feel we ought to follow over the next five years. So with that said, let's go ahead and get started. Before we do, can I just talk to our community a little bit about social media? All right? If you have a concern about a safety at your school, door propped open, something's not being done the way you think it ought to be, please, please, bring it to the attention of your principal. Call me here at the district, Brian Holmes, okay? I'm the Chief of the District Police. Call the main number, ask for the police, the police chief, it'll go right to my office and tell me, all right? We'll look into it. Please don't push that out on Facebook and start spooling up that concern and getting everybody worked up over a perceived, a perceived issue of security, okay?
And Chief Holmes, if I can add to that, it also, if there is a safety issue, we want it solved, we don't want it broadcast.
Exactly.
Exactly. So to parents who think that they're helping by putting it out on social media, they may be unfortunately informing people.
Putting this school at risk. Unnecessary risk.
Unrisk, yeah.
So that's why we asked you to do that.
Exactly.
So I just had to put that out there because it's just too important of an issue. Let's talk about a little bit of background. We're not just trying to meet the requirements of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act here at Orange County Public Schools. I say that because before the tragedy at Marjory Stoneman Douglas, we had Sandy Hook. And back in 2013, after that tragedy, the school board decided, we better bring in a security consultant. We want to see what we're doing here at Orange County, is, are we doing what we need to do to keep our students safe, our teachers safe, protect our schools? So they brought in an expert in school safety and security from a company called Safe Havens International. They conducted a district-wide safety, security, and emergency management assessment of the district. Now, I talked about this last year, but I really think it's important we bring this up. We've had a run on this already. So when I say we exceed in a lot of these areas, the previous school board and this school board with your support have helped us get along this path to where we are today. So that assessment drives a lot of what we're going to be talking about tonight, or drove it, because we've achieved some milestones in that. We've also had, after Marjory Stoneman Douglas tragedy, we had Safe Havens come back, and they reassessed us. Now, it wasn't an overall assessment like they did, they just took a look at an overall program, and where were we at? And they were very pleased. They had nothing but praise for how far we moved the needle when it came to our safety and security program from where we were at back in, in 2014. So that's good news for the district. They passed Senate Bill 7026, Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School's Public Safety Act, and we have to meet those requirements. They've also passed in 2019, and you'll see up here on our slides as we go along, you'll see some dates. You'll get to see how we've moved this needle, where we started with this, and how far we've moved it. And I'm proud to be part of this program here at Orange County Public Schools. So 2019, Senate Bill 7030, we're still running to keep up with that, but we are. So, that assessment drives a lot of what we're going to be talking about tonight, or drove it, because we've achieved some milestones in that. We've also had, after Marjorie Stoneman Douglas tragedy, we had Safe Havens come back, and they reassessed us. Now, it wasn't an overall assessment like they did, they just took a look at an overall program, and where were we at? And they were very pleased. They had nothing but praise for how far we moved the needle when it came to our safety and security program from where we're at back in, in 2014. So, that's good news for the district. They passed Senate Bill 7026, Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School's Public Safety Act, and we have to meet those requirements. They've also passed in 2019, and you'll see up here on our slides as we go along, you'll see some dates. You'll get to see how we've moved this needle, where we started with this, and how far we've moved it. And I'm proud to be part of this program here at Orange County Public Schools. So, 2019, Senate Bill 7030, we're still running to keep up with that, but we are, and we've been meeting the requirements of that law. So, Senate Bill 7026 required the Superintendent to appoint a School Safety Specialist. She appointed me. I had to attend some training. I didn't, I passed it. I have the certificate to prove it. Anna, I have the certificate. My responsibility is for supervision, oversight of a school's safety and security personnel, policies, procedures, I don't think there's a better fit for a police chief to do. I also oversee the district threat assessment team and the threat assessment process that we have going right now, and I'm a trainer in that along with Anna Jones. I also focus primarily on providing a safe educational environment for all students here at the district. So, tonight, you're going to hear me discuss what we call security strategies. You hear me say things like prevention and early intervention. You hear me say things like risk mitigation and preparedness, and we'll talk quite a bit about physical security because that's an important piece as well. To do this, we had to break this down because just, you know, one, one person can't just be in charge of this and make all this happen. This is a big orange we've got here, and we've had to peel it off in pieces to make it work. So, you can see here, District Police, what are we responsible for? Police and security. We have safety and emergency management that overlooks and oversees our emergency preparedness, those risk mitigation strategies, as I like to call them. We have facility services, along with our asset protection team, who oversee the physical security improvements at our schools and facilities, and then of course, student services is responsible for mental health. So, when I talk about meet and exceed, when the district decided it was going to create its own district police back in August of 2015, that was not a requirement of Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. This is something that you've done that's over and above and beyond. Now, we're one of four very large districts, when they did the Safe Havens Assessment, that did not have its own district police. So, Safe Havens said, we recommend that you do that. We did it. Now, when I tell you it was a heavy lift, getting something started from scratch is not easy, whatever you do. Be careful if you're going to get involved in a startup, alright, because it's difficult. It's a lot of heavy lifting, but we built out a great team, and you can see, I've got my complement of team up there. Some addition to that is our intelligence analyst unit. We have six intelligence analysts that, positions that do a lot of the back-hall work when we have threats and security concerns, and it's been very valuable. My police commanders can be out in the field, they'll have them working on it, along with the other agencies in the county that have intelligence analysts, and it's been very, very effective. We also stood up our own district police communication center, which has certified dispatchers, police dispatchers, just like you'd call if you were to dial 911 and reach out to Orlando Police Department or the Sheriff's Department, any one of the municipalities that has their own communication center. They're qualified to work in those centers as well. So, it's a very robust program. We're small, but very effective, and they're doing a great job, and I'm extremely proud of them. So, one thing I want to point out, and I think this has been the missing link when it comes to safety and security for schools, is that now there's a requirement to have threat assessment teams in our schools. Alright, every school is required to have its own threat assessment team, which involves a school administrator, mental health, the SRO or law enforcement, and someone from teaching and learning. And most schools, it'd be a dean, and there can be other people, other persons on that particular team. We've stood that up here at the district. We have a district, we call them the DTAC team, a district threat assessment team, which we all meet together and, and talk about this program. Anna and I are involved in teaching the threat assessment process to the schools. We've had several sessions now, it's been received well, and the program is up off the ground now. With a lot of things at DOE, we're building the plane as we're flying it, okay? So, and we're trying not to crash, but it's one of those things that we had to get up off the ground. They're very sure turnaround on this stuff. It's up, it's running, we've got the tool out there, they're using it, and this, again, I think is one of these programs that's vitally important for safe schools. Prevention does not require prediction. We don't have to predict who the next school shooter's going to be to put prevention in place to keep that from happening. And we're never really going to know how many kids we kept from going off that rail. We're never really going to know. But we are going to know how many threats we've had, what types of threats they are. There's, there's different levels of threats. Some kids are just joking, and they are. They just say something off the cuff, on a whim, it's a transient threat. And I could go into this for how many hours? I can't. But that said, it's really important that we have this up and running in our schools, and it's going well. Again, prevention, early intervention, we do random metal detection screenings in our schools. We've done full-scale screenings, we'll, we'll screen everybody coming into school. We've done screenings of buses, we've done screenings of classrooms, things of that nature. We also have a school-based screening that we rolled out last year where the school administration goes out and they'll screen classes as well, using metal detection wands, just to make sure that we got that message out there. And Dr. Jenkins, she points to this and talks about it, any place, anywhere, anytime on our school campus, you could be screened. Don't bring a BB gun, a toy gun, a pellet gun, any type of gun, but don't bring a firearm to our campus, any type of weapon. There's a good chance you're going to get caught here at the district. Do not bring it onto our campus. We have a visitor management system that is just, is very robust. Everybody comes out of school, gets screened, and if they happen to be on the sex offender database here in the state of Florida, or on the national registry for that matter, it's going to come up, and we're going to know who's coming to our school. We're going to know, and we're going to be able to prevent if they're not supposed to be there. If they happen to have a child in our school, then they're going to be escorted. Alright? Let's talk about emergency preparedness, because this is an area that, from when we, where we started back with that first Safe Havens Assessment to where we are now, it's, it's just amazing. I've got to give full credit to Senior Director Doug Tripp and his team at Safety and Emergency Management. They focus on organizational resilience. If something bad happens, are we ready? We've got to be ready. Bad things happen, we've got to be ready. And we've got board policies in place, management directors in place, comprehensive emergency management plan in place. We have safe school plans, emergency procedures manual, lockdown, lockout, evacuate, shelter. Everybody in the school district ought to know those drills, they ought to know when that's called for, that, what to do. And we train our schools in that. We have standard response protocols, we have technical guidance bulletins, we have emergency drill, standard operating procedures. Next slide, and I can go on and on and on, and you can see how much we've done. I think one item of note that I, I'm sure the board's aware of, but the public may not be cued in, we did a full-scale exercise last summer, where we did an active assailant exercise in one of our high schools, and it was really important to go out, engage with our local agency partners. We had several law enforcement agencies there from, from Orange County. We had fire, EMS, we had school administration, we had teachers, we had just a lot of participation in this, emergency management professionals as well, and it really went over well. We found the places where we had some issues, and that's what it's really all about. And we've worked on those, and we focus on those, we test ourselves. Again, this is not required by Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act. This is above and beyond. This team's doing a great job, a great job. Let's talk about physical security improvements. Our physical securities team's sitting over here to my left, along with asset protection. They take, and they have installed in our schools, intercom systems, duress systems, proximity card readers, every time you swipe to get into one of your facilities, they're involved with that and managing that equipment, security camera systems, and we have other confidential system and security measures that we don't talk about, and we won't. We'll talk about that stuff when we get into our executive session. Next slide, perimeter fencing, signage, school design guidelines. We literally build into new schools what we call SEPTED concepts. Crime prevention through environmental design. Design a building that's safe. Design a building that actually prevents things from happening. Wider hallways so kids aren't bumping into each other, things of that nature. You don't, might not think, but when they throw their shoulders into each other, next thing you know, what do you got? You've got a conflict, right? Just simple things like that, but they build that into the school, and we work with facilities to, to make sure that's done on an annual basis. So, back to the missing link, as I like to call it, the mental health services. Our mental health team makes sure that we meet the social and emotional mental health needs of all of our students. Now, we've had mental health services prior to 2018, but I want to, I want to point out that in 2018, we stood up a mental health services department, given it that the importance that it really needs to have here at the district. And you can see all the services they provide our students. These are provided to our students who are in need. That's important to provide for a safe school, and certainly for their health and well-being. They're also directly involved in an important part of our mental health, excuse me, our threat assessment, a threat assessment process. Again, Anna and I, team teach the threat assessment process to our school administrators. Also in those, in those trainings have been counselors, deans, safe coordinators, and the next class we have scheduled, we have our SROs, and we're going to have all the SROs that are on our threat assessment teams attend the training. That's going to be a lot of fun. Next slide, please. So keeping up with the act, I don't want to make it sound like it's been easy, it has not. It has not, but we have assigned one or more safe school officer each of our school facilities within the district. This was a heavy lift by our local law enforcement agency partners. We don't have every one of the schools in each one of the jurisdictions covered by that jurisdiction because they didn't have enough people. We've had to put our police sergeants, yes, our sergeants in schools to cover these schools. We have two of ours covering positive pathways, alright, and they're doing a fantastic job. I can't say enough about the team that I have, and they just keep on going every day. That's not why we hired them. We hired them because we want a regional model, I want two sergeants assigned to every one of our, our learning communities, out there providing additional services, doing these weapons screening processes. My police commanders do the weapon screening process, because we need our sergeants out in those schools to meet these requirements of the law. But that said, we'll get there. We'll get there, and our partners continue to work with us. We have actually 10 agencies, including us, providing those services, bell-to-bell coverage. No leaving the campus, bell-to-bell coverage. No leaving the campus, you have to be relieved if you're going to leave, okay? Our charter schools have that coverage as well, and they've actually have guardians in the schools at some of the charters. Let's talk a little bit more about Marjorie Stoneman and the requirements. Again, we were required to establish the threat assessment teams. Again, we've got it up and running. We were also, and prior to this, we were required to have what they call an anonymous tip line, alright, and it's a really, truly a student crime watch program that provides that opportunity. We've used SpeakOut hotline for years, but they mandated that we implement Fortify Florida. And I'm here to tell you, because I know personally, that, that goes on 24/7/365 because I get every one of the Fortify Florida tips that come through. And a lot of it's gibberish, we had to put a link on all the, all the schools, all the students' computers so that they could do it. Well, you know, they see that on there, it's an attractive nuisance, they click on it not realizing what's going on with it, next thing you know, you got a tip. All you got to do is click the link, you've got a tip. Alright, so they, sometimes they're quite humorous, I might add. Other times, they just type, you know, letters and numbers and that's it. But we have had some tips come through, and it's good that we have that, that we have not disengaged from our relationship with SpeakOut, they continue to provide us tips as well. And the thing we like about SpeakOut is, they vet the tips. We don't get them unless it's something that would be useful. Active assailant drills, we have to do one per month in our schools, yes, required by Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. So, we're doing that. Active assailant response plan training, had to be completed by October 1st. Talk about a heavy lift. I got to give, again, Doug Tripp and the emergency management team a tremendous amount of credit to get that done. Superintendent has to sign off a certification for these things. Tonight's meeting, after we're done with it, again, I'm sorry, Dr. Jenkins, there'll be another certification, but we got it. We're checking off the list. So, we also have active assailant hostage situation training conducted in our schools by our local law enforcement. So, we work together with emergency management, we put together a training last year, we're about to update that process again for this year, and the second half of this school year, we'll push that out to them with their cooperation, and they'll put on during one of the drills that we have, so we can take one of them off the list, that active assailant training in our schools. It has to be done by the agency that responds to that particular school in an emergency. Has to be trained by them, but we work together in cooperation to make that happen. Now, I want to talk about the Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool. A lot of what I'm going to be talking about in the executive session meeting will be driven by the FSSAT, alright? The FSSAT had to be completed, we had 30 days to get this done. There were 468 questions on this assessment tool. Had to be completed by the, by the school administration. With the help of the district police, we got it done. But again, to try to get that out, get that message out, and get that done in such a short time, they were supposed to get it down, DOE was supposed to get it out earlier, they got, had a hard time getting the tool, using vendors, et cetera, I could go into the long sad story, but they got it done in time, they got it to us in time, we had a mad dash to get it done, we got it done. Thank you to all our school administration out there that worked together with us, and again, to my police command team and my intelligence team that helped make this happen. You can see, it's got a lot of sections and areas to the tool, and if you go to the next slide, it, it covered a lot of territory. They had to answer questions about all these things. The challenge for a school administrator on an assessment tool like this is, they're not security professionals. It's not what they do for a living. They're answering questions that is just not in their wheelhouse. We helped them as much as we could, we put together a sheet to help answer the questions as they should be, provided them who they needed to contact to get some of the information. That said, it's not in their wheelhouse, we're hoping it goes a little smoother for DOE next year, safe schools, and again, if it does, then it'll go better for us. The public safety first responder tours are required triannually, triannually, if I can say it, once every three years. We had the law enforcement do the tour last year, I'm reporting it out to you this year, I say last year, it's actually this year, but last school year. They went around to all of our schools, visited the schools, they came back with some recommendations of us. I'll share that in more detail in the executive session. These are the areas that they were talking to us about, where they would like to see some changes and some improvements, and I'll talk to you about that in the meeting. So, to wrap this all up, here are my findings and recommendations. OCPS, Orange County Public Schools, is in the process of meeting. We're exceeding the requirements set forth by the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Acts, both Senate, Senate Bill 7026 and Senate Bill 7030. I do have some recommendations from our entire team. Continue to develop this competency-based emergency preparedness skills amongst... some changes and some improvements, and I'll talk to you about that in the meeting. So to wrap this all up, here are my findings and recommendations. OCPS, Orange County Public Schools, is in the process of meeting. We're exceeding the requirements set forth by the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Acts, both Senate Bill 7026 and Senate Bill 7030. I do have some recommendations from our entire team. Continue to develop this competency-based emergency preparedness skills amongst our district personnel. All that stuff we've done, we need to keep doing it, and doing it, and doing it. Continue to conduct annual district-wide active assailant hostage situation training and the active assailant response plan training. Continue to mature our emergency preparedness program. Continue enhancing school emergency communications, electronic and physical security infrastructure, and what we like to refer to in my business, school hardening. All this costs money, we know it. With that in mind, we have received a grant which we're using for hardening this year, school hardening. We received a $7 million grant, a little over $7 million, for safety and security of school buildings. And my facility, our facilities team is working hard on getting that out, and we'll give you a lot of detail about that in the next meeting. We got received a grant for $143,000 for the hazardous material emergency preparedness grant, helping pay for that two-day exercise. Didn't come out of the school district budget, and that was a very generous grant. We recently were approved for a $70,000 grant, and there's a match to this one from the district, but for, to build out our district security operations center. And last but not least, a $400,000 student resilience project grant that helps with building students' resilience to traumatic situations that happen in life. Pending, and we're not sure what's going to happen with this one, but we're going to apply for a $3.6 million grant, again, for hardening. Again, we're hoping we can continue with our hardening program, spending DOE money on it here at the district. And with that said, I'll turn it over to Superintendent for some comments.
Thank you, Chief Holmes. I would remind the board, the review that you have just heard is according to what is required statutorily. We do, as a board and as a district, for an additional security measure, not disclose all of the specifics around some of our activities to keep our children and our employees safe. Those questions certainly can be reserved for your executive session. Anything in particular from the overall comments that Chief Holmes has made, we're certainly happy to answer for you at this time. Very pleased with Chief Holmes and his work, very tedious, extremely paper-driven process that we are working on, but if the end goal is to keep our children and our employees safer, we are happy to comply. So I want to commend the team, certainly thank the board for your support as well for so many resources that have been invested around our security and safety measures. With that, Madam Chair, members of the board, happy to answer those high-level questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I have two questions. One, I know you can answer, because it's been addressed before, but just because we may have members of the public that are watching this because it's about safety, and they may not have heard this before. One of the concerns that we hear from time to time is what, what happens when our substitutes are in our classrooms, when a drill is conducted, and what level of, of training do we provide for substitutes? That's question one, and the second one.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. They're required to take the active assailant training and all the precursor trainings before they ever set foot in our classroom.
Thank you. And I just think that's important for our parents to know. Secondly, and I don't think you can answer this on the spot, but we've, Orange County Public Schools has done a tremendous job over the last 15 years of renovating their entire school stock. All of their schools have been brought up to the same educational standard, and in the course of that, a lot of safety improvements have been able to be incorporated at the same time. And we're in a remarkable place compared to most school districts across the state. We still have pockets of schools that have portables, and again, I don't think you can answer the question now, but as we look at the design for access to our portables, access from the outside, as well as portables as a structure for safety, if you could look at that, and, and again, I'm not asking for an answer back now, but if you could come back to the board at a future point in time with any recommendations that you have for how we make sure that we have the safest environment in our portables while we need to have portables on our campuses. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And Member Gallo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions, if you'll indulge me just for a minute. On one of the slides, it mentioned, I think we have, you said eight security guards. Can you just tell me, like, on the first, when you were going through the list of employees, I was just curious to where those securities are.
The 16th security officer?
Was it 16th security?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't write down the number, and you switched too fast. What are their roles, and are they at the district level, or are they at the school? Where are they?
Some of them are at the district level here. They, they do, they are assigned up through my team. Some of them work out in some of our special schools, ESE schools, and then some are assigned here at the district. We have responders, security responders on 24 hours a day. So if there's, say, for example, an alarm at a school, or a contractor needs to get in in the middle of the night, we have issues with refrigeration, they can go out, open up a door, and make sure those matters can be tended to. So yes, we have security officers, and they, they answer to my team.
Are they armed security officers?
They're not. They're not armed.
Thank you.
And they, they answer directly to Sergeant Cuts.
Wonderful.
Does a great job.
Thank you. And then my next question is, on the threat assessments, I know that there was some lag from the Department of Education on getting the training necessary for the threat assessment tool. Where are we on that? Like, how many of our threat assessment teams have been trained, and how many principals have been trained?
And you have the number, it was 242? 242 have gone through the class so far?
Wow, okay.
Yeah. So we've been through high school, middle schools, and the elementary schools. Some of the ESE, special schools have been through it. Again, we need to, we've got other members we want to.
That's awesome. So that we've almost gotten through all our schools, then, with the training?
Almost, yes.
At least with the principals?
With the principals. We're required.
Okay. Okay. And then we're getting to the threat assessment teams?
Yes, we're going to go all the way through, try to get everybody that's serving on those threat assessment teams through this training in time.
And with the threat assessment tools, I know that it has to be serious or very serious before we have to fill out the entire assessment. Is that correct? And at what point is a parent notified? That's not correct. Okay, then correct me.
Well, you, okay. There's transient threats, there's transient threats, serious threats, and serious, very serious substantive threats. There's three types of threat levels.
Right.
And you, there's a seven-page document that would have to be completed.
But only for the very serious threats?
What's that?
On every threat?
On every threat, yes.
The seven is every threat.
What about the 22 pages?
If you don't mind, if you'd come up to the mic as well.
I can answer that question.
That's fine, that's fine.
The 22-page mental health assessment is only required if it's a very serious substantive threat, which involves threat to kill, rape, harm with a weapon.
Okay.
So there has to be the most very serious substantive, and then they require a mental health assessment. And that requires a mental health professional to do that assessment. It's not done by just somebody there at the school, not anybody can.
And we call the parent prior to administering the mental health?
Parents are notified, yes, ma'am, I didn't mean to cut you off, but parents are notified. And they have to give consent, yeah.
And so they cannot give consent if they choose?
Yes.
Thank you. I just, I'm, I'm doing this more for public record, because I want parents, and I want families to be very clear about what's happening in our schools and what we're required to do.
Remember, Gallo, the reason I'm wanting to make sure that the answers come through that mic is for the same reason. So it's very helpful that we have staff in the audience, but they can't hear, so we need to hear from Chief Holmes to reiterate the answers so the public can follow.
And then I just have two more questions, if I may?
Please.
So the guardians and the charters, I know, I don't want you to name them, because I know that wouldn't be safe, but how many charters have chosen to use the guardian program in Orange County? Do you know?
Yeah, there's 11 charters.
11. Out of how many charters do we have?
We have 41.
41, thank you. And then the FSAT that we have to, that you just completed and you put to the DOE, does the DOE review that and kick it back if there's issues? I mean, so what's the process after we send it to the DOE?
Yeah, they, they said they're going to comb through the data, but we can comb through the data as well. We're using that data to, to drive our security program. So yes, the DOE is going to be going through that data. Well, I'm sure we'll hear something back.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm confident of that.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Chief Holmes, excellent job. Thank you very much. And we look forward to seeing you a little later on this evening.
All right.
All right, we're going to move on to the action portion of our agenda. Before I do that, let me mention to any members of the public that might wish to address the board on anything that's on the rest of the agenda. I do have two-speaker cards, just so that everyone understands this process. I want to make sure that, that we understand that this is, we follow parliamentary procedure here. The testimony that you give is, is testimony. It's not an opportunity for debate or engagement with the board, although board members are free to respond if there's anything that they have to provide. And staff will be available to meet and answer any questions that might come up. And with that, I note that we have two that are regarding the consent agenda. So before moving on to those, let me ask Dr. Jenkins if there's any changes to the consent agenda.
No changes, Madam Chair.
All right, there are no changes in consent agenda, so let me call on the two speakers we have, Sarah Terrell and Melissa Hernandez. Ms. Terrell, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Jenkins, and Orange County School Board members. My name is Sarah Terrell, and on behalf of the Hunters Creek Elementary School two-way dual-language families, I would like to thank you for your time reviewing our agenda item. We are passionate advocates for our children and for this dual-language program. We see the value in having a continuous program through the eighth grade, and we hope that you do too. These elementary students have committed themselves to being bilingual learners and are well-prepared to continue learning at a middle school level, as they have already been taught to read, write, and speak in two languages, and are bilingual citizens. We believe in a continuous program would allow our eighth-grade students to pass fluency exams and gain high school school credit. A continuous program would be an amazing opportunity, not only for our students, but I believe for both of our magnet programs. We are asking for magnet program preference, allowing the Hunters Creek Elementary School two-way dual-language magnet graduates to continue in the Hunters Creek Middle School dual-language magnet program. And that is all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And consideration.
Thank you.
It is exciting. Great program.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time this evening. My name is Melissa Hernandez. I'm a parent of one of the students, two students, actually, that have gone through the dual-language program at the Hunters Creek Elementary School. So this is about my eighth year of participating, and it's a wonderful program, and I was delighted to see on the agenda that you are possibly looking at a mechanism to formalize a process to give priority preference to the students in the elementary school as they transition into the middle school. I think it's super important, and I support it 100% because most people may not recognize that it's, it's not an ESOL program. It's not, it's all students, non-native Spanish speakers, mixed with native Spanish speakers, who are learning in two languages, as Sarah mentioned. And a lot of the parents and the kids have been committed to this since kindergarten. OCPS has put behind it many resources to make it a successful program, and we just love for you to be able to continue it in the middle school so that the kids can continue to grow and foster to become bilingual, bicultural, and biliterate citizens of Orange County. So pleased. Thank you so much for considering this, and again, on behalf of many parents, we want to thank you for keeping the lines of communication open. I know many administrators have responded to so many of the parents who couldn't be here tonight, so Sarah and I are here on their behalf to say thank you for considering this, so.
Thank you. Well, let me recognize Member Cobert and then Member Gould.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank these parents for being wonderful advocates for their children, for their schools, and for this program. If I had the magic wand, all of our students would be bilingual and biliterate. That would be my dream. So this program, very, very important to who we are as a community, and I, I think having this natural progression into middle school, and then, of course, what's available in high schools is very important. So I want to thank you for your advocacy, and I want to thank Mr. Moody and his team for being receptive to this. This is actually something that I know Mrs. Gould and I have been talking about for a very long time, and it is tonight on the consent agenda.
And Member Gould.
I, I wanted to not only thank the parents, but Member Cobert, because this has really been a program she championed right from the beginning, knowing the advantage in the elementary school and how to be able to carry it forward. So this is a thrilling night to be able to have this happen. So I hope, we're just thrilled that it's on this agenda.
Thank you. Member Lopez. Our dual-language speaker on the board.
Yes.
That we all envy.
Oh, no, no, no. Thank you, Madam Chair. I am so glad to hear this. I remember the emails from the parents advocating for their children to, to have that preference to continue the, the dual-language program. So I also want to congratulate the multilingual department. They're doing an amazing job on supporting the schools that are having the, the dual-language program. I also want to take this opportunity to ask if we have any type of plan to, to extend this dual-language program around our county as well.
Hmm, great question. Dr. Jenkins?
We are, as, as more than one board member has mentioned, they are extremely popular, and so we are looking at the expansion. The challenge quite often is to be able to find enough staff that are going to be duly literate, not just two languages, but all of the areas of literacy. And so as we're looking to expand that, certainly anyone who has those skills and talents that is interested needs to apply to OCPS.
Thank you. Thank you. Boy, I wish this had have been available for my kids, but even more than that, selfishly, I wish it had been available for me. What an awesome opportunity. All right, let's move on then to the consent agendas. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Member Cobert, seconded by Member Lopez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Member Cobert, and the entire team here at Orange County Public Schools, the board, and everyone else, and thank you for your, for your advocacy for this program. Thank you. All right, we will move on now, and we are going to recess our regular meeting of the Orange County School Board and call to order the meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation. The first action we will take up is requesting approval of the minutes of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation dated November 26, 2018. Is there a motion? Motion by Member Gould, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is the approval of a resolution authorizing conversion of $12,990, 90,000 principal amount of certificate of participation, Series 2000E, 2000, I'm sorry, 8E, to a new index floating rate mode, and the remarketing thereof to JP Morgan Chase Bank, and execution of related documentation, including amended and restated Schedule 1997A1, third amended and restated Series 2008E supplemental trust agreement, certificate purchase of agreement for Series 2008E certificates. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Member Gould, is there a second? Second by Member Gallo. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The last item is the approval of a resolution authorizing modification of a forward basis for the interest portion of basic, basis lease payments under an amended and restated Schedule 2000A1, represented by the Series 2015B certificates cured under a First Amendment to the 2000, Series 2000B supplemental trust agreement. Is there a motion? Motion by Member Gould, is there a second? Second by Member Bird. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. With no further business to address, I'm adjourning the meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation, and we're reconvening the regular meeting of the Orange County School Board. And Dr. Jenkins, I will turn to you for any informational items.
I have a couple of items, Madam Chair. First, want to announce to the board and ask for your assistance, I am going to be establishing our first-ever K-12 mental health council. We have so many issues facing our young people, not just those that get lots of attention, such as Baker acting issue that has come up most recently, but so many issues that deal with our young people. I think it would be useful for us to have a group that convenes with expertise throughout the community around the K-12 specific needs of mental health. And so I would ask board members, if you know of individuals, organizations who might be able to assist, who might make good members and partners on that mental health council for our children, that you get that information to me. I will certainly be meeting be able to assist, who might make good members and partners on that mental health council for our children, that you get that information to me. I will certainly be meeting with the chair to get some parameters in place and bring them back to the board, but very pleased that we will be moving forward with our very own, very own K-12 Mental Health Council. Number two, get that pick, read, and roll video ready to go. I need to read you a quote. So last Tuesday, we had over 7,500 students at Amway Arena, thanks to Linda Landman Gonzalez and her team. Alex Martin also was there in person to support, and seven of their top players were actually there as well, to motivate our fourth-grade students to really dig in and get better and better at their reading. At that event, fifth graders were down in the VIP section on the floor, because they had the greatest gains in their reading achievement, and fourth graders were in the upper seats so they could envy those fifth graders and make a commitment that they're going to be down on the floor next year. So here's a quote from one of the fourth graders, said to his parent, "This was the best day of my life. I'm going to quadruple all of my efforts around reading, check my answers, work really hard like those fifth graders, because next year I want to be on the floor, on the court in the VIP section. And did you see me dancing? It was a blast. My ears are still ringing from all the singing and the screaming." I have to agree with him. All of the adults who were there, our ears were ringing, and I think the Magic Players, Linda Landman Gonzalez said, "Oh, my gosh, we need to invite fourth graders for playoff games," because the noise level, and it was not completely filled with students, but the noise level was far beyond what they had experienced at a playoff game. That's from staff members who were there to witness it. Roll that tape for me.
(crowd cheering) (inaudible) 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 So I thought the highlights were going to show stuff, because he was there, the dancers
were there, the rappers were there. It was just an exciting time for our children. Want to thank Orlando Magic for providing such a wonderful motivational activity for our young people, all around reading, known as pick, read, and roll. Secondly, if you take the New York Times, there's a photo they're going to put on screen for me as well, on the first, on the front page of Sunday, October 20th, New York Times, I have it here as well, we have our students at West Orange featured. Now, what they're talking about is a very popular app called TikTok, which they use for putting little short drama vignettes on, musical, what have you, and West Orange has a TikTok club. And so they actually heard about it from a couple of sources, and the New York Times reporter came to Orlando and visited West Orange and featured them. We did not know, we knew there was a possibility, we didn't know until late Saturday night that it was actually going to make the hard copy. So it's actually in, was actually in print, was on their digital version, but then made it to the hard copy. First page, West Orange was featured. Now, what I like about it, just so you know, what I like about it, it wasn't just the app and our young people and their multi-talents and the TikTok club that they have in place, but it also happens to mention, "The school is on a quiet palm tree-lined street in a town just outside of Orlando. A hallway by the principal's office is busy with blue plaques honoring the school's AP scholars." Its choir director, Jeffrey Redding, won the 2019 Grammy Music Award. So while they're talking about this club and this app and our wonderful, brilliantly talented young people, they highlight West Orange having AP scholars as well as a Grammy Award-winning. It's great, and it carries on, carries on to a follow-up page, but so pleased that they would honor our young people. It started out, reporter found a few TikTok clubs across the nation. It's an app where they take these short vignettes, short videos, and share them. In some instances, they're even around academic areas, most times it's more around drama, theater, music. So she got in touch with a student, Kate Sandoval, who's a senior at West Orange High School, and then she actually started the TikTok club, and her sponsor is Michael Callahan, teacher at West Orange, and principal, of course, Bill Floyd, who looped in media relations when they knew we were getting this kind of attraction. So to have our students in West Orange featured on the front page of New York Times was quite a thrill, very proud of them, wanted to mention that. And lastly, got one more picture for you. Bridgette Williams is absent tonight. She went in my place to a Philadelphia 76ers game. That is Tobias Harris, who used to play for the Orlando Magic. His foundation was giving us one of the awards he was providing to communities where he's been on their basketball teams, and because I wouldn't miss the board meeting, Bridgette made a sacrifice to go, to fly up to the game and receive a $100,000 check for Orange County Public Schools Foundation to help us with professional development and reading. That is Tobias Harris, of course, in the photo, and a very wide-grinning Bridgette Williams. She looks extremely short, because Tobias is so tall. We appreciate, again, anyone who considers our children, no longer plays here, but included us in his presentation honoring three different communities where he's had a connection, and we're very pleased with that, and thanks to Mr. Harris and to his foundation.
Awesome. That's it, Madam Chair. That's awesome. Attorney Fernandez, anything to report for the board?
I think tonight.
Okay. Board members, under policy issues, there is one issue that I wanted to raise. We had a discussion, it was our last meeting, about the Capitol millage that was 1.5 mils prior, well, actually, after the recession, reduced to 2 mil, I'm sorry, it was 2 mils, reduced to 1.5 million mils. We've had a couple of parents that have called since that, asking about why it's not on our legislative priorities, and I think we actually put those together before recognizing this. So I wanted to bring this to the board for an amendment to our legislative priorities, and I think we can do that here. Wanted to check with Dr. Jenkins, we're in good shape. Okay. So if there aren't objections, I'd like to amend it?
I just need to see a nod of a head back consensus.
Okay, everybody, no objection to modifying, and I think there's a perfect place, because there's a place, and it talks about our Capitol millage and how it's used, so we'll do that. And then one other issue, well, one other issue I was going to bring up, but I think another board member's going to bring it up, having to do with scheduling around Halloween. So we have a little bit of a, a little bit of a problem, Dr. Jenkins. A few of us are kind of serious about Halloween. Some of you may have little ones. I, I host an annual little party, and my husband's out of town, and it's the first year, we have brand-new neighbors, and I've committed, and I didn't realize we had, we were backing up into the 8:30 hours. Is there anything we can do about our...